We will go ahead and all the orders begin Wednesday, June eighteenth, twenty twenty-five, City Soul regular council meeting. That can start off the punch.
I'd like to reach out with your flag of the United States of America. And we do the regard for what which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Vocal, Duncan, here, parlors absent tonight, Gabriel, Eric, Crayton, here, quiet.
Here.
This is our civility pledge, we pledge to promote civility by listening, being respectful of others and acknowledging that we are all striving to support and improve our community. But let's see if we can improve the agenda, I believe we're catering items both twelve and thirteen correct at the request of the developer.
Yeah.
Any other changes?
Um, uh, engineer report Dave Shekinger is not there soon.
We have a motion to perfect and improve the agenda of those changes.
All set up.
Duncan? Yes. Gabriel?
Yes.
Crayton?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yes.
It takes us to citizens speak, this is a time for anybody in the audience that would like to speak on any non-agenda items. We do try to cap it about three minutes, I did say that last time, you did great job keeping it right around their cassy, but go ahead.
Alright, hello everyone, cats of vocals again, speaking of that, uh, the citizens of the city of Solon, so. Uh, thank you for your continued service council members, and I'm here today on behalf of those who are concerned about information. Has been shared regarding the recent resolution discussing, discussed on May twenty-first and June fourth council meetings. On May twenty-first, the resolution in question was never shared with Jordan Creek Church, despite being directly related to our involvement. It was also not attached to the meeting minutes, leaving both our team and the broader public unaware of what was being considered. Then shortly before the June fourth meeting, on June fourth resolution, it finally was shared with Jordan Creek Church. But not in enough time to allow the review of questions and meaningful input from Jordan Creek Church or the community. This process did not reflect the level of transparency or collaboration we believe is important in civic decision making. It makes it extremely difficult for involved parties to participate in good faith. And for community to have a clear understanding of what is being proposed. In other cases of public interest such as significant development proposals or the new sewer plans, there has been a repertory at public forums in advance notice. We believe this situation really merits a similar situation and a similar consideration. Therefore, as been requested several times this past week in both the council and the city administration. We formally ask that this resolution be added to the public meeting agenda either tonight. Or in future special hub and meetings, we respectfully request that all council members be present. And that the meeting be open to the community to allow for questions to be answered in a transparent and honest dialogue. Thank you for your consideration.
I'm just gonna read this, so I'm not avoiding eye contact as well. It's gonna be down, so I can read through these glasses. Good evening, members of the city council, mayor, thank you for bringing me the opportunity to speak before you today. I stand before you not just as a representative of Jordan Creek Church. But as a voice for the hundreds of lives that have been touched, transformed and uplifted by its presence in our city. Uh, our church is far more than bricks or mortar or a place confined to Sunday mornings. It's a cornerstone of our community, it's a beacon of comfort in times of sorrow and radiant celebration of unity and joy. Its very foundation is in the strength of human connection and in the enduring power of hope in Christ. Throughout the years, our church has ministered to hundreds of families. Each week our fuse ministry feeds anywhere from a hundred and fifty to a hundred and eighty people at no cost to them. We have robust children's ministry that not only cares for children between, but spiritually, emotionally and physically supports their families. During the summer, there'll be countless connections made in the city throughout the minute, through the ministries of Jordan Creek Church. Uh, and in these last months, our church has sacrificed to purchase groceries and help with utilities for the need. Uh, these ministries and moments make up the purpose and mission of Jordan Creek Church. These moments are not deeply personal, are not only deeply personal, but are threads in a larger tapestry that binds us as a community. What is found in the resolution that was passed last meeting, the municipality agreement that was attached. Can only be described as impediments, hardships and distractions from that mission. Well, this is a mission we strive to accomplish as a nonprofit meeting. I understand as members of city council, you're tasked with making decisions that affect the future of the city. Today, I urge you to consider the profound role on church planes in shaping that future. It's not merely a religious institution, but it's an engine of goodwill. A culter, a cultivator of kindness and a source of unyielding strength for all who seek it. As leaders, you have the power to ensure that this vital institution continues to thrive. And that it remains an unwavering source of hope and healing for generations to come. Either through policies that support programs or partnerships that can amplify our efforts. Or simply recognizing Jordan Creek's invaluable role within our city. Your stewardship can help, uh, this church maintain its mission and spirit. After all, this is the reason for which our failing moved hundreds of lives. To be part of a thriving church in a thriving community. So when we look at our church, it's not an isolated entity, but it's an integral part and lifeblood of our city. A place where the soul of our community finds its voice and its strength, and so together. I look forward to us nurturing and having a relationship where we not just are interested in a collection of buildings and streets. Are interested in a town that's a home filled with love and compassion.
Thanks, Ron.
Thank you, Ron.
Tony, yeah?
I've had a busy night, uh, neither just approached me and the ghost who saw parking lot. And the economist just came out and he gave this to me and asked me to ask you a couple of questions and I barely understand, so if you don't understand, uh, it's alright. Number one, what is an auxiliary water, uh, an auxiliary, non-industrial use? That's number one, number two, what is the charge that the developments, JW and McBride Point, if they are connected, if it's connected. Um, what are they paying or going to pay with this new ordinance, is it double? As he understood it to be, I didn't have an answer for that. And finally, is it correct that there is going to be on everyone's water sewer bill next month? A fifteen dollar sewer debt fee plus a five dollar debt service usage fee? To retire the debt for the wastewater treatment plant? And is it correct, finally, that these developments that by point it hooks up with gallery acres? Are one, not paying any property tax and two, are not using sewer? So we're getting no money towards our sewer debt and this is going to be. He estimated about fifty houses, I think it's about forty-six, if we do hook up McBride Point, that's going to be fourteen houses plus thirty-two, thirty-four, I don't know the exact number. Roughly fifty, Westy Town better pay no property tax and no, nothing applied to our sewer debt. And this when we're trying to sell three hundred and twenty-five houses in a city funded development. These are his questions and however you can answer them, I'll pass them along, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Alright, uh, it takes us down to the content agenda, so this approval of minutes from the June fourth, twenty twenty-five regular meeting. Approval of the list of bills, pressure reports, uh, report transfers, building permits and event, the core four, August sixteenth, is there anybody here for the core four event?
Uh, Alex wasn't able to be here, this is an event that we hosted in the past. So been talking with Alex, um, via email for a few months. This is, um, this is the race that they use that trail along behind the high school. And so they have to get permission from the school, they need to also get permission from, um, DNR and for Johnson County Conservation. So I know Alex is working on those, um, also needs to do a trail rental for the SRNA trail, he's working with Brody, so it's, it's kind of complicated. And, um, so we are, um, working with him, we have a strategy and planning meeting coming up. Um, before the event last year, we put some road signs, traffic direction signs, just to let people know the writers were gonna be coming. But Alex wanted to at least get the preliminary approval, um, the route is in the, um, is in the packet, I don't see any issues. What we, there probably be a rest station at the SRNA, so we need to coordinate that. Lot of coordination, we're happy to host these events in Solon, glad they're coming back to Solon, we just want to make sure we have. Uh, a good, a good plan, so everybody has a great safe time. Um, I don't have any concerns, I reviewed the application with Brody, he didn't have any concerns either. We'll bring public works into it once to, to that planning meeting once it's set.
Left, we have a motion to consent the agenda. I'm going to consent the agenda.
All right.
Duncan, yes, Gabriel?
Yes.
Crayton?
Yes.
Quiet head.
Yeah, yes.
Uh, it's us to the public or district report.
Okay.
Yeah, um, wanted to, um, share that, um, we had the splash pad inspection with Johnson County, thank you to Chris Richardson for facilitating that. Um, we did have, uh, just one thing they wanted us to, um, uh, address. And in the process of getting that, um, done and reported back, did have some issues with the splash pad over the weekend, but thank you to Chris and to Dave for handling that. Uh, these things don't, um, you know, these things happen at the worst times sometimes, um, but great staff to address that, thank you both very much. Um, but I wanted to share that the fuel, the sheriff's fuel pump is back up working. Um, and also that Prairie Rose Lane, the, that, that street has been poured. Uh, so they are going much quicker on that than I think we anticipated, Dave had told us it probably been under the gym. But they already got it poured, I'm not sure when they're planning to open it, um, but just the fact that they're as far as long as they are is, uh, great news. Uh, we did have a, a water service line leak this week, public work staff, we got the call early one morning, went and figured it out. Um, determined it, it likely was a service line which came and dug that up and, um. Staff did a good job of handling that, talking with the homeowners, sometimes those service line projects are a surprise. People don't understand what's their responsibility and what's the city's, and again, um. That's that insurance program that the city has supported in recent years, that's one of those opportunities, so. They've spoke with the property owners and first, then the first contact with their insurance company and then we'll work with them. Um, but if needed, um, because those bills get pricey. Um, also, uh, wanted to welcome Brady Robertson, who's our new public work specialist, started on Monday. Um, and then, uh, Chris has been spearheading the, uh, tree replacement program, some of the trees didn't quite make it. So that's not unexpected, but did you get some new trees when you went up there today?
Okay.
Um. And then, um. The, uh, Solonary Community Foundation donated four thousand dollars toward Trees to Randal Park. Uh, Chris has gotten one tree in and there's a few more to come, so. This tree project has just really been a great part of our spring, love hearing that. Um, love just hearing our, all the work that's being done in that area. Finally, the last thing I want to report is Big Grove is this Saturday. Public Works will on Friday get the pick victims, get the road closing, um, get the cable and the cement barrier set for the bikes. Um, so that we're ready for that on Saturday. And then the road will be closed on that stretch there alongside Big Grove on Saturday.
Alright.
A lot going on.
Yes. Oh no. Alright, Kevin, anything, Susan? Alright, takes us to item eleven, John Spence supervisor, uh, Rod, I'll hand it over to you.
Okay, thank you, can you hear me? Um, I just have three things on my agenda here to mention, I don't think any will be a surprise. Uh, first, I wanted to, uh, thank the city of Solon residents and, uh, Solon Fire for their involvement in our, uh, ongoing discussions about one hundred and fortieth street. Um, I think folks there will be happy to know the county has decided on upgrades at both the Ely Road intersection and the Highway One intersection. So those are both gonna have, uh, rumble strips. So that, uh, as you approach it, uh, you will, you know, you know what those sound like. And, and, uh, so anybody who's texting or otherwise, um, not paying attention, that ought to help, so. Um, as near as we can tell, there's nothing else with the intersections that would lead to these accidents that we've been having, so. Um, there, there's a lot of evidence that it must just be drivers not paying attention, so we're gonna try to get at it that way, so. Again, thank you to all the people from Solon who, uh, weighed in on the need for that and all the Solon Fire for their feedback. Um, you folks are aware of the, uh, aquifer study and I think, uh, Kami, I sent you the, the draft of that. And as soon as we get that final study back, uh, we're going to spend some time, uh, talking about what it means and where we go with that. And we will certainly reach out to City of Solon and invite you to participate with us or on your own or however we want to do that, but, uh. Obviously, I think there's some interesting information in there for all of us to share, so we're looking forward to that. And, um, uh, per the, uh, the, uh, sort of, uh, odd, uh, zoning thing that has come up, uh. Uh, in our, uh, fringe area that wasn't covered by, uh, the fringe area agreement that we have, I know Kami, you've talked about wanting to, uh, update fringe areas so that that doesn't happen again. And we are obviously, uh, happy to talk about that, uh, whenever we get around to it, so. Um, that's all I have unless people have questions for me.
I appreciate the updates and it's awesome, running empty, I've got music on main.
It was a good time.
Yes.
Thank you all.
Alright, thanks for having me around. And it takes us down to new business, so this is, uh, number, I, item number fourteen on the agenda. Uh, you have the SRNA twenty-eight E agreement draft, the electric meter concession stand, yeah?
Yeah, so, uh, the, the city and school committee has been working through an updated, an update to the SRNA twenty-eight E agreement. Really since last fall and we've had two kind of, um, pinnacle meetings, one was right after Christmas. And where we really got down and got really some of these things ironed out and lined up and, uh, and then a, a meeting last week. And so we're down to just a couple of items that I think, um, both Steve and Dan and Brody and I were at the meeting. And just felt that these were items that need to come back to the full council for discussion. Um, the work that's been done, I think, has been, uh, just really good progress. It's helped identify, uh, how the needs for both the school and the city have changed over the years. As the city's grown, as active, some activities have become more popular than others. And also just gave the city and school committee opportunities just to have some real, um, just, just some real good conversations. On, you know, what each entity and agency needs and how do we create an agreement that's really gonna kind of help stand the test of time? Um, so that when the people in the chairs leave, there's still a framework of an agreement that everybody really understands. The other thing, um, is that there were some kind of offshoots to this agreement, we're trying to wrap all of that into this new update. So we don't have all these offshoots and extra agreements. So the draft in your packet is not the latest draft, I just got the latest draft from, um, Davis this morning. And the committee obviously will need to review that and provide some comments that I'll send back. But the two items that were up for discussion, I'll turn over to Dan or, uh, Steve.
Yeah. You want to start, Steve? John, uh, go ahead. Uh, one of the things that we talked about is Cam said there are a lot of handshake agreements between school and city, uh, just over the years. That all were done with great intentions, but as we have turnover on both sides, some of those get forgotten about. So without pulling everything into the agreement, having everything stay there, be helpful, so as we have transition or, or turnover on both sides. It's, we aren't trying to remember who agreed to what, that it's all, all's under the agreement. Um, couple of items that we have outstanding, one is the electric meter on here. Uh, one of the things that we had discussed, there's a, a quote as well that can pull. And verify, correct, we can't even find the speaker on, on any of this. Um, where we have a separate meter that the school would have on their account, one meter would be on the city's account with, uh, I believe it's a line. Um, with that, and so we would, where we would both just pay our bills versus having everything one, run through one meter and it's intermissive. The meter gets red or anything like that, uh, it felt like the group was on board with putting in the second meter. It runs, I believe it's about sixty-five hundred dollars for separating it and, uh, verifying if they would be doing the work here in town. Um, but it's something that we wanted to get discussion on how we feel, do we, do we want to move forward with that? Uh, that bill would be split between the city and the school, but from a cost, so it's neither the, the city or the school would see a sixty-five hundred dollar bill that we were, split that. On there, uh, I was in favor of going with that option on it, just so it, it makes it very clean cut. Um, for us and it's just part of the, the month of the going, I don't know, Steve, you want to add anything?
No, it makes, it makes sense that, uh, tracking, um. Baseball light use and things that are happening, uh, outside of our city use. Um, th- those costs are pretty high, and so having two meters, uh, makes it much more clean for the schools. Uh, to pay their bill and for us to pay our bill, uh, for what's going on, they had concession stand, uh, thrown in there also. It just, it, it just is, is a cleaner process, uh, to track these kind of things. And to know that that area is probably gonna continue to grow, we had another concession stand, it, just all this. Into this agreement, and it fits, it's the only twenty-eight E agreement, I didn't realize that's only twenty-eight E agreement that's still as you pass is with us. And it is a big one because we share so much and I have really learned a lot, uh, even having been in school business for a lot of years. Um, what, what are general agreements that we have done as a city, uh, for the school district? What they've done for us, uh, when you look at just raw costs, um, it, it, it all makes sense. But this allows the agreement to bring all that in and everybody understands where we're at. And we've got a lot of new players in this since the last twenty-eight E agreement was, was done. Uh, some of you can find some of the, yeah. Uh, so I think it's a good, it's taken us a long time to get here and some really good discussions, uh, have taken place, uh, about. Our shared vision of costs, mainly costs, but big thing, and I think this is just another step. Spend sixty-five hundred dollars and split that cost, have meters down there where we know the school districts reading their meter, we're reading our, paying our bill and away we go. So it's, it's, it just makes a lot of sense to me.
Uh, the other item, uh, that there's still some discussion around, uh, is just around the fee, so, uh, I believe going back, it was like a one-year. Trial or there's an agreement where, uh, the, the school is gonna pay twenty percent of their sales to the city. Uh, that's something that dropped off of lead twenty seventeen or so, um, with that, and again, that was. We, I don't know if that was a written agreement or that was one of the handshake.
It was a written agreement from two thousand and six. Yeah, but it was one of those agreements that was outside of the twenty-eight E agreement, yeah, so.
I guess with that is discussion on, one of it is, you know, what are the expenses that the city has? Down there, you know, with, with the concessions, with, uh, the restroom and, and everything that goes on with that, pulling the electric out of it definitely will help. Um, some there, but it was, if, is there a fee, is that twenty percent fee accurate? We left the meeting, uh, the other night, just to give it's, if the school could come up with what they felt was. A, a fair amount and also what twenty percent of their sales would be. We had where, uh, Kami is gonna dig back into what are the city's expenses, um. Or down there and then just come together, what we feels the, the right amount, is it? Is electric the majority of it, where we no longer need a fee, is that we split up on who's responsible, so if, you know, there's a, a, a clog in restroom during a school event. Does the school handle it versus the city handle it, like, there's just some things there where the costs. Um, I don't know, Steve or Kim, if you have more that you want to add.
I've got a little history, is that the city built the concession stand but struggled running it. And so this, those baseball group have said, hey, approached the city and said, we'll run the concession stand. Um, and it really took a burden off the city to allow them to do that, but it still was a city concession stand. The city was paying the electrical, all the toilet paper, all the paper towels, all the. Elect, you know, just everything to run the concession stand and they felt that there should be some, something paid. You know, by the school to basically rent this concession stand, so to speak. And I don't recall those conversations back in the day, I mean, I was here, but I don't recall the details. But it was agreed upon that twenty percent of the net sales of the concession stands seemed like a fair start, a fair place to start. And that was paid up through two thousand seventeen, the last payment that we received in two thousand seventeen was about nineteen hundred dollars. And that was an accounting that was given at the end of the, uh, each fall from the proceeds of the concession stand. And so, you know, how that original agreement came, I think that was just their way to come up with some kind of, you know, uh, amount. You know, what that amount needs to be now in this new agreement, or if there even needs to be a ma- an amount, I think that's what the. That's kind of, I think the direction the committee is looking for is, does there need to be an amount? And if so, you know, you know, we need to work on forming up what's that based upon.
I think the big thing is there's a, it's, what's a fair amount?
And so right now the city pays the dumpsters, um, uh, the dumpster fee, all the electrical. And all the paper products in the bathrooms, um, what else, Chris, I mean, what else is associated with these with them?
General wear and tear, said, alright, couple of times a year we have to have, uh, trains. Um, I'm, I'm just big events tend to bring issues, so, you know, Scott one time, just sitting and talking about it. It got to, it got to over ten thousand dollars pretty quickly, uh, that the city was spending down there. Uh, for all those kind of things, now you take electricity out of that now, and that gets more equitable. I figured it could change, we're still spending a lot of money down there, um, on toiletries and all that kind of stuff, so.
And, and the other thing that's changed over the years is that we're just, there's just a lot more. And so city staff, you know, where it used to be, we checked the restrooms once in the morning on Saturday and Sunday. We're now doing that two and three times a day and because of all the events. Not all our school events, not all our city events, sometimes it's combined, so we have that extra cost of just making sure that they're, they look nice and they're. You know, cleaned up periodically through the day, because once a day is not enough anymore, they're just used too much. Um, so we have that extra just, um, expense of staffing and checking, you know, the garbage and making sure their toilet paper and things like that. So that's really, I think, going forward, we just have to look at it through that lens that. Things are different than they used to be when that original agreement, you know, if there's a cost, you know, how are we based on, of course, I, I, I still have some research to do on that. Um, but I think if I'm correct, you know, just, is there a consensus that there should be a fee? And then we want to make sure it's based upon some tangible costs that the city has.
I feel like it will be, I would definitely recommend that we approve the, the second meter or the expense to have the meter, which is. See if others feel the same way, but I. see if others feel the same way. But I think it would be good to see, you know, what's the, the frequency, the, the cleaning, what are the other costs down there? Knowing that it's not a hundred percent school usage. I don't feel like this school shouldn't pay a hundred percent of the, but I think if we could try to come up with, what's a breakdown? Is it five percent of the usage, ten percent, whatever that is, and come up with a number that we can present and have further conversations with the school as far as what's a fair fee? If there is a fee, if it comes back where electric was ninety percent of the, the cost, then maybe there is a different conversation. But I think until we, we know that, that's kind of the direction I would lean towards with it, but I'd like to see. And what else is up?
I think the electric meter is fairly straightforward. It simplifies the administration of it and makes any other decisions regarding the twenty-eighty. Twenty-eighty simpler. Yeah, and then a breakdown and then a rough number. If it's a couple thousand dollars. If it's more than that and there are maintenance fees that go with it, we come up with a number that gets as close just so we can make sure that the concession stand and all the supporting infrastructures can keep going and evolve in years. What exactly does it split up?
It's a good poll. See if it was in the.
You want to talk about it a little bit, Chris? You were down there.
Splitting the meter.
Yeah.
So it's split like the, um, the lights, the scoreboard and there's sump pits on each dugout, which, that'd be the bulk of it.
And then that meter would go like to the school.
That would be for the school.
And then they keep the.
That has nothing to do with the city.
Got you.
The concession stands would still be on the city's meter. I mean, that'd be just how it's going to have to be. So, but the, just the big things from the school is scoreboard, the lights and those sump pits. Because I know, you know, early in the spring, when it's raining, those do run quite a bit from what I've been told, so.
Thank you.
I think I forget about that project. So I kind of knows the details.
You know, thoughts or?
I share, I share y'all's feelings. The electric meter should happen. And then, yeah, we need a little more information to make a decision on that number.
Should we make a motion for the bill for the, for the meter?
I will make a motion that we add the additional electric needle meter and I want to create this.
Maybe just prove the expense of adding another meter or the other.
I make a motion to add the expense of an additional meter for the concession stand and each more expensive.
I'll second.
Duncan?
Yes.
Gabriel?
Yes.
Kramer?
Yes.
Whitehead?
Yes.
And then more to come. We'll keep everybody updated as we work through the rest of the, I bet that's fine.
I think the only other thing, Mary, I would add is, this discussion has been going on for a year. Twenty-eighty agreements are not easy. But the information that we've both shared citywide and from a school's perspective is always good information to know. I mean, you know, many times we don't know what school district's doing as far as some of their expenditures around toiletries for appear at the center, gym usage, you know, there's always things that, that they may be doing that we don't know about, these things that we're doing that they don't know about. But it, it, these kinds of things are not easy discussions at all. And I think where we're at now is a labor of, of a pretty, pretty good conversation on, on both parts. Maybe both feel good about where we're at now, getting down to these two items. After that a year's time, it's, it's a good agreement. It'll get signed. Up to date is a framework that we can all work from that I think will benefit both the school district and us going forward.
Great. Thank you for just all the labor.
Yeah, meeting attendance and, and everything.
Now that takes us down to other business. Doesn't look like we have any updates for streets. Kami gave a little bit of an update on the street board during Public Works Director Report. Utilities, we don't have anything on there as well as finance or personnel. We'll have a quick meeting afterwards with the Building Needs and Growth Committee. Nothing from police. City School, we had the meeting last week. Just need an update on that. And then a community center meeting we had before this as well. Any other updates from committees? Takes us to M sixteen, City Administrator Comments.
Yeah, I wanted to share that music on main was canceled earlier today. So we'll get that rescheduled hopefully. Also want to let the council know that there's going to be no planning and zoning meeting this month. There were no items submitted. Wanted to remind everyone that the wastewater treatment plant analysis Zoom meeting is tomorrow night at seven. I'll send out a Facebook reminder in the morning for folks that's been on the city calendar for a while. The link's on there. That's basically the presentation that Dave and Emily gave to the council in April. It just allows the public to see that presentation. We weren't able to be here and have an opportunity to ask questions. The second one will be in person here at City Hall on the twenty eighth at nine o'clock. So that, so we offered two sessions, one on Zoom and one in person. And then we also received notice of the Johnson County Housing Study Open House. I will get that posted and share. That's going to be on the twenty-sixth. They're doing two open house sessions and around the county. And I'll get that shared with both the council and the community here tomorrow. So exciting news. And then Dan and I are meeting with the, they asked to meet with Dan and I. The Jeff, who's, who's the coordinator of that study meeting next week with, with them. So looking forward to that. It's all the comments I have.
Any council comments?
Yeah, Kami, I had a couple of questions last week, ten days about the fiber optics in and around town. Is there a plan to get to neighborhoods that haven't been? I, I guess I just thought everybody sort of got hooked up when, when they were here for all that summer. But I'm finding that we've got places that aren't. And I, I didn't have an answer for them, whether they'll be back or what they, how that, like down Woodlily. That area down there, I, I would have thought when they did all of our neighborhood down there, that would have all been done, but the spots that aren't.
I'll find out. I had that same question this week. And I, I do know the intention is that for the whole town, but I, I don't know. And I actually thought that, wondered too why they didn't end up going all the way down.
Is that a south flow question, Robert?
I'll find out. Yeah. I'll find that and I'll report that.
Alright.
Mayor, I do not have any seating, which takes us to, final one, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All, David, say.
Hi.